So, to order and will stand for the pleasure of allegiance led by Mayor Mout.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Laz?
Here.
Ms. Crary?
Here.
Mr. Smalls?
Here.
President Ricks?
Here.
Mayor Mout.
I'd like to announce that we're going to defer the approval to the minutes of the Mayor and City Council for Monday, May, excuse me, Monday, June 8th until our next meeting. Is there any objection to that from the Council? Seeing none, we'll go on to the general public hearing and I'll open the general public hearing at 7:01. Is there anyone wishing to speak on any topic? Yes ma'am, come forward and give your name and address for the record.
My name is Yolanda DeZell and I am at 506 Clay's Lane. I want to talk about the excessive loitering and drug dealing on the corner of Clay's Lane and Maple Avenue across from Alice B. McCullough Park. I have noticed upwards of 10 people, men, women, and children, but mostly men, standing on the sidewalk or on the grass area, sitting on the curb, usually beginning around dusk and continuing throughout the night. Upwards of two vehicles in the same area around that same timeframe. On the weekends, upwards of three vehicles parked on both sides of the street. And the vehicles seem to be visited by individuals either from other vehicles or on foot traffic. Almost looks like a business setup, okay? And then there's the residue of all that loitering, the trash. So I'm out there every Saturday morning to deal with that mess. Who wants to live like that? There's also the suspicious pieces of trash that's seen in the debris that I pick up. So I know that there's something not kosher going on there. The other part of the problem, as far as I can tell from speaking with my neighbors, because I'm very new to the area, is the neighborhood fear, the fear of retaliation to speak up, and the fear of the inherent danger of drug activity. And that's a big problem because it creates that complacency that apparently has allowed this to go on for so, so long. So I wanted to make some suggestions about doing that. And one of them would be a door-to-door appeal to neighbors, informing them about their narcotics tip line information. If it could be a visible presentation into the community via the police force so that the people who are engaging in this activity can see that they are being supported. And it can calm some of that fear. Also, a video surveillance of the area could be a deterrent and could also bring a sense of safety, again, to quell some of that fear. A no-loitering sign would be lovely. The trash is just crazy. It's crazy. It's everything from rubber gloves to empty beer bottles. And it's almost every night. I also thought about perhaps putting some type of a barrier there temporarily, maybe on certain nights of the week so that there's not this traffic. I'm coming in from work one day and I'm actually sitting there behind a vehicle waiting for them to finish their drug transactions so I can go on and park a few feet away. That's just crazy. That's just so blatant and so disrespectful, you know? Not to mention what it's doing to property value, okay, another story, but... And perhaps consider putting out some kind of a campaign that covers everything, that comforts residents, that goes after the dealers, but also goes after the people who are coming in to buy the drugs, letting them know that this is not the place to do this. You can come in here and try if you want to, but you might not make it out. There has to be something that's hitting that from all three sides. So, that's what I wanted to...
Okay. Thank you for your comments and I can tell you that I will look into this and I will discuss with my colleagues and we will get back to you in person and let you know what action we are able to take.
Thank you.
Mayor Mout?
Thank you, thank you for coming out. I'm sure the Police Department has spoken to you?
Yes.
Yes. There are several things going on within the community. Some things you'll see, some things you won't see.
Okay.
We'll be talking with the chief on a couple of things that... Now, how long have you been in there?
I closed down this house the last Friday in March.
We've done several sweeps in the area. There used to be a real problem in the, not only just in the Grove community, but in other areas of the city. We have some issues, some problems we're dealing with as well. So I don't want to single out, but we're aware of what's going on in some cases. And I will follow up with the chief and we'll make contact with you as well as tell you, as much as we're able to tell you. But there are several things going on in the neighborhood. Great, thank you, thank you for coming out. Thank you, Mr. President.
We will follow up with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and welcome to Laurel.
The second person that signed up to speak, and I won't forget him this time, Bob DePietro. Good to meet you.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, you want to speak on that item?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, I'll close the general...
I'll close the general public hearing unless there's anyone else that wishes to speak. Yes ma'am, come forward. Give me your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Mina Saunders and my address is 806 Maple Avenue. In addition, Yolanda is actually one of my neighbors. And in addition to some of the open market drug activity, which includes those visible drug transactions, loitering and trash, blocking the streets for through traffic, various individuals frequenting our neighborhood, and the disrespect for our personal property and speeding, my concern is the general safety and welfare of the children and families within our community. As a resident of Maple, I have personally witnessed non-residents transacting drugs in exchange for money at 2:00 in the afternoon as I walk my child home from school just a few feet away from my front door. The loitering is a concern because my son plays with other children in the McCullough Field, which is also used by the Catholic school community and other organizations. It bothers me that my child and other innocent children are just steps away from highly populated drug activity and traffic. The traffic itself is a concern because it involves vehicles and dirt bikes traveling at high speeds and performing amateur stunts through the neighborhood. This includes Maple Avenue, Clay's Lane, and Down 8th Street. Once again, we have a public safety issue. And what happens when a stunt goes wrong or someone doesn't see my child as they're zooming through the neighborhood? Of course, when the speeding and racing concludes, then they congregate at the corner of Maple and Clay, blocking the traffic. The disrespect for my personal property entails individuals running through my yard and posting up in the neighbor's yard, throwing book bags containing guns and other drug paraphernalia as they run from the police. Not only that, after they're running through our yards, they have been up all night having loud conversations and entertaining until the wee hours of the morning down on Maple and Clay. I'm here because I want to know, what can you do to help us within the community? It's not that we haven't been contacting, calling, and even in turn stopping past the police station. They do respond. The issue is 10 minutes later, they're back. And so is the drugs, and so is the traffic, and it's a nuisance. Have we exhausted all of our resources for a community to keep it safe? And what can we do about houses that we have identified as problem houses? They're rental properties, nuisance houses. Is there cameras? Can we stop some of this traffic flow? Where are we at with progress? Because we have known for a while that there has been some issues down in that little cusp.
Good. Thank you for coming out. I think you heard my comments on last. I'm going to ask Don to touch base with you before we leave from Police Department, get names and numbers for you. Couple of things that I want to make sure everybody understands. We are still responding to calls when we're called. We do routine. We also have several individuals, I shouldn't say several, one or two individuals that constantly want to come up here to this Mayor and Council and crucify the Police Department for doing their job in that community. So that's where we need to get the community, the members of that community engaged. And I think we'll start with asking for a community meeting with the Police Department. Elected officials will be there as well. We've been through this process, I'm sure you're aware of this. You know, I've been around for a while. There used to be a problem there on 8th Street where the trafficking was coming in from 95, Route 1, other areas. It wasn't the individuals that lived in the community, although at times there were some. But a lot of the trafficking going on is coming from other areas or outside the city. And as I said earlier, I don't want to single out, we have issues with drug issues in and around the city of Laurel. There are some things that we're able to say to you publicly. There's going to be other things that just, you're going to have to bear with us. But we're not going to tolerate it, I'm not going to tolerate it, but we're going to work with the community. We'll get people engaged and we'll work to make sure everybody is respected as well as the Police Department. That's very crucial with all the things that are going on in other communities. We want to make sure that if we come in there, people understand we're coming in there for a reason because the community has asked to come in there and take a stronger stance. When it comes to loitering or it comes to cars, you know, blocking the lanes, all of those things, we need you to continue to be engaged, call the police. If it's not, they may go away 10 minutes, we still need you to call. I know that's an issue for some people. You don't have to leave your name or number, you can just say you're a citizen of the area. But the more that we're able to keep those statistics, they're able to do things with those from a Police Department perspective. So I think what we'll do is, before we leave, we'll make sure we touch base. We will have a community meeting will be the first thing and then we'll put a plan of action together for you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming out. Thank you for being involved.
Thank you.
Would you do me a favor before you leave? Would you sign this?
Sure.
Okay. So we can make sure we get your name and address and everything? Thank you, ma'am. All right, at this time, it's 7:13 and I'll close the general public hearing. Item number eight is the fourth public hearing with possible action on an ordinance number 1837, map amendment number 847, an ordinance to approve map amendment application number 847 for rezoning of the property known as Sandy Spring Village located at 312 Sandy Spring Road, Laurel, Maryland, consisting of 1.44 acres, identified as Laurel subdivision, block 3, lot 20, tax parcel 1033588, owned by Ross Phyllis and Calvin Grau, located on the south side of Sandy Spring Road between Philip Powers Drive and Montgomery Street, from the R-18 medium-density multifamily to the R-21 family semi-detached, two-family detached, and one-family triple-attached. Robert, yours?
On March 9th, 2015, memorandums asking for comments was sent to the City of Laurel Police Department and the City of Laurel Departments of Parks and Recreation and Public Works. The response dated March 12th, 2015, was received from the City of Laurel Department of Public Works, which reads as follows: "The existing driveway shall remain at the same location to serve as the access point. No additional driveways will be allowed along Sandy Spring Road for ingress/egress at this time. Keeping the existing driveway location will minimize traffic interruption and maintain traffic safety on Sandy Spring Road." On March 12th, 2015, responses were received from the City of Laurel Office of the Fire Marshal and the City of Laurel Department of Parks and Recreation stating that neither department had objections to the request. On March 13th, 2015, the Laurel Police Department sent a response stating that the department had no objections to the request. On March 11th, 2015, a request asking for comments was sent to the Maryland State Highway Administration, Prince George's County Health Department, Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, Prince George's County Department of Public Works and Transportation, Prince George's County Public Schools, Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission, Maryland Department of Planning, Verizon Baltimore Gas and Electric Company. Responses were received from the following agencies on the following dates. Maryland State Highway Administration dated March 16th, 2015, stating that the administration had no comment. This response has been made part of the official record for this application. No other responses were received. The file contains a memorandum from the City of Laurel Planning Commission dated April 15th, 2015, which reads as follows: "At the regular meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission held on April 15th, 2015, the following action was taken on the subject zoning application. On motion by Mr. Kish, seconded by Mr. Weller, carried on a roll call vote of all members present, the Planning Commission recommended that the Mayor and City Council approve map amendment application number 847 as presented in the technical staff report and proposed ordinance. Shortly after the April 2015 Planning Commission meeting, it was determined that the applicant had not sent out hearing notification letters to all contiguous property owners as instructed by staff regarding the application. Therefore, the rezoning request would have to be reheard by the Planning Commission and Mayor and City Council to allow for testimony from the public at all applicable public hearings. The applicant submitted certified mail receipts to staff showing that neighbors were mail-noticed on April 23rd, 2015. All return receipts were received with the exception of four property owners whose certified mail letter was either not collected or was unable to be delivered by the United States Postal Office. The names of these owners have been made a part of the official record. The Planning Commission reheard the case on Tuesday, May 12th, 2015, and held a public hearing. No testimony other than the applicant's was given. The file contains a memorandum from the City of Laurel Planning Commission dated May 13th, 2015, which reads as follows: "At the regular meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission held on May 12th, 2015, the following action was taken on the subject zoning application. On a motion by Mr. Kish, seconded by Mrs. Holland, carried on a roll call vote of all members present, the Planning Commission recommended that the Mayor and City Council approve map amendment application number 847 as presented in the technical staff report and proposed ordinance. The file contains a certificate of publication verifying that both applications and the public hearing were advertised as required by law in the April 30th and May 7th, 2015 additions of the Prince George's Sentinel." That concludes the reading of the file, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Mr. DePietro.
Bob DePietro, 502 Ormond Avenue, Laurel, Maryland. On behalf of Legend Builders, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, members of the council, we're back. Technical glitch, totally on our back, our fault. On the mailing of the certified notices, that file has all been corrected. Proper notifications have all been received. As staff reported, we've been before the Planning Commission twice. This is our fourth visit to you and we enjoy coming on a regular basis. This is what will amount to be 10 brand-new units. The existing house will stay on Sandy Spring. It's a downzoning from multifamily to a townhouse, basically, single-family attached units. I do want for the record that each house will be sitting on a fee simple lot. So therefore, this is 100% of a homeownership deal for the city. We will comply with all the requirements of the stormwater management, which really doesn't exist. So it will be updated to today's standards, best practices, and we'll build the WSSC sewer system for them. Thank you, and we have to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Council? Mr. Laz?
Thank you. Mr. DePietro, I assume that there'll be some renovation of the existing house?
The existing house will be fully renovated.
Okay, and landscaping and so on?
Absolutely.
So people move in there, have a nice, single-family home sitting in front of them. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, sir. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing at 7:19. With the pleasure of the Council.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I move for the adoption of ordinance number 1837. Map amendment number 847 is read into the record.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Ricks?
Yes.
Mayor Mout.
Thank you. We'll go to item number nine. That's a second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number 1847. Map amendment number 850, an ordinance to approve map amendment application number 850 for rezoning a property located at 518A Montgomery Street, Laurel, Maryland, consisting of 4,650 square feet, identified as Laurel Park subdivision, block 26, lot 9, tax parcel 0993394, owned by Franklin, and I'll spell the last name, D.J.I.S.A.M., located 125 foot east of 6th Street on the south side of Montgomery Street from the CN Commercial Neighborhood Zone to the R-55 One Family Detached Zone and providing for an effective date. I'll open the public hearing at 7:21. Roberts?
On April 15th, 2015, a request asking for comments was sent to the Maryland State Highway Administration, Prince George's County Health Department, Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, Prince George's County Department of Public Works and Transportation, Baltimore Gas and Electric Company, Verizon, Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission, Maryland Department of Planning and Prince George's County Public Schools. Responses were received from the following agencies on the following dates. Maryland State Highway Administration provided a response dated April 20th, 2015, stating that the agency had no comment regarding the application. Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission regarding map amendment number 850 dated April 30th, 2015, stating that the impact of rezoning the property would be negligible. No other responses were received. Also, on April 15th, 2015, memorandums asking for comments from this were sent to the City of Laurel Police Department, Department of Parks and Recreation and Public Works. Response dated April 16th, 2015, was received from the Department of Parks and Recreation stating that the department had no comment. On April 17th, 2015, the Laurel Police Department sent a reply stating that the department had no issues or concerns with the request. The Office of the Fire Marshal provided a response dated April 20th, 2015, stating that there was no objection to the application. City of Laurel Department of Public Works submitted a response dated April 21st, 2015, stating that the department had no issues with the request. On April 20th, 2015, a notice of the filing of the application was sent to all contiguous property owners. All return receipts were received with the exception of two property owners whose certified mail letter was either not collected or was unable to be delivered by the United States Postal Office. The names of these owners have been made a part of the official record. The file contains a certificate of publication verifying that both applications and the public hearing were advertised as required by law in the May 14th and May 21st, 2015 additions of the Prince George's Sentinel. A memorandum from the City of Laurel Planning Commission to the Mayor and City Council dated May 13th, 2015, regarding map amendment number 850, reads as follows: "At the regular meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission held on May 12th, 2015, the following action was taken on the subject zoning application. On a motion by Mrs. Holland, seconded by Mr. Kish, and carried on a roll call vote of all members present, the Planning Commission recommended that the Mayor and City Council approve map amendment application number 850 as presented in the technical staff report and proposed ordinance." That concludes the reading of the file, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas. Appreciate it. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, with the pleasure of the Council.
President.
Yes, Liz.
Move for the adoption of ordinance number 1847. Map amendment number 850 is read into the record.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
President Ricks?
Yes.
Mayor Mout.
Thank you, Madam Court Reporter, I appreciate your time. I have removed the item number 10 from the agenda tonight at the request of the Planning Commission. The item will not be heard. At this time, I'll call for the report of the Mayor and City Council. Ms. Nicholas?
Thank you. I attended the City of Laurel's yard sale a few weeks ago. I also attended Mary Lehman's mental health awareness seminar that was at the Laurel Hospital. I want to give a special thanks to Alicia and Lindsay for the tour of Main Street businesses. People are still talking about the passport booklet that they put together. I also attended the memorial service at Ivy Hill, which was well-attended, very nice. Thank you.
Mr. Laz?
Yeah, just one item. I want to thank Reverend Litchfield and Bob DePietro and the members of the Laurel Rescue Squad, Laurel Volunteer Fire Department, Laurel Police Department for the wonderful memorial service at Ivy Hill. It, as Mr. DePietro said, has been going on for 42 years. And we tend to see the same people at that service every year. But it's a very nice service, not too long. And of course, the women, the ladies, and the men of the auxiliary at the Volunteer Fire Department put on a fine meal after the service. So again, I want to thank them for a wonderful service. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Crary?
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the events already mentioned, I attended the Laurel Library groundbreaking today. That's a huge event and for those of us that have served on the committee for the last three years, at least, to have the ground broken and the building coming down, it just means so much to us. Now, there's some discrepancy as to when it'll actually open. The county's involved. Also, the Laurel High School graduation I went to this afternoon. And there was 367 graduates this year, which is up about 80 to 100 graduates from last year. It was a wonderful ceremony and everybody shiny and new and we sent them out into the world and we hope they're all successful. In addition, I attended the Armed Forces Day at Mission Barbecue, owned with the mayor. And that was the same day as the ERC Yard Sale. And all the events were well-attended. And I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Smalls?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also had an opportunity to attend the Ivy Hill Memorial Day observance. I also had an opportunity to attend the Ivy Hill Memorial Day observance, and to kind of add to what Councilman Les mentioned about attendance, I remember a few years ago with that event that they had a band from one of our local middle schools. And when you think about ways to get more involvement and people out, perhaps including our schools in participating in that program, maybe a way that would get them out. But certainly, my youngest daughter was in the band at, I think it was Eisenhower Middle School, and they participated in that event. So with that said, I also attended this morning the groundbreaking for the Laurel Library. I sat on the committee as well, and I have the good fortune now of being part of the Art in Public Places, Prince George's County Art in Public Places, that will help identify artists to be commissioned to actually do sculpting for the exterior artwork for the library. But I just want to remind folks also, it was a great presentation that was made and discussion that was had this morning, that this goes back in terms of working with the community regarding the library, the kinds of things that would take place at the library, how Emancipation Park would be affected. It goes back as far as when Tom Denoga was a member of the county council, and as Mr. Denoga mentioned to me today, he sort of got the ball to the 50-yard line, and Mary Lehman charged forward with getting it into the end zone. So everyone that's been involved, the friends of the library, members of the council, the mayor, members of our city staff, who have all been involved, as well as members of the community in getting us to this point, will be very pleased with the end result. So I certainly look forward to that coming in 14, 15, 12 months, whatever is the case. That's my report, sir.
Thank you very much. I attended, like my colleagues, a number of these things. The one that I really would like to touch on tonight is I was honored to represent the mayor at the Laurel High School graduation awards ceremony. And no matter how many bad things we hear about the young adults today, there are always those that step forward and rise above the occasion and are outstanding, young ladies and young men, that are going out and going into college and moving forward with their aspirations to succeed. And obviously, I saw, you know, all kinds of things that we would never have thought about. Students that are going forward in all kinds of professions of doctors and nurses and cryptologists and all kinds of things. And it's just amazing, and it's very blessing to all of us to know that that's going to be the future of our country. And so I want to thank the mayor, and I know we want to thank all the parents out there that are raising the children to be those young men and women that are going to be something for the rest of us to look up to in the future. So with that, Mayor Moe?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me add condolences to Larry Hall, which is Joanne Hall's brother and our, Joanne's deputy director of Park and Recs. I want to offer our condolences. Had the opportunity to attend the Laurel Police Department's annual awards banquet at Partnership Hall. Again, I want to congratulate Officer of the Year and all those award recipients for the work they do year in and year out. To the City of Laurel employees as well, I want to thank them for having their yard sale. It was packed out there, and I think all those proceeds go to help the employees and the other projects that they're involved with in the community. As you heard, Councilmember Crary talk about, Mission Barbecue did have their Heroes Event, which is a event they had on May 16th. I was very happy to go and represent the mayor and city council, as well as Councilmember Crary. They do a lot for the service personnel, our men and women in uniform, and police, fire, and rescue. So again, I think a great addition, and was happy to be there. On the 16th, we did have National Kids to Park Event over at Goody Park. I want to thank Mr. Lotzky and his staff for doing that as well. And then, as you heard, on May 24th, we had the Joint Memorial Day Service at Ivy Hill Cemetery. For those that don't know, that's the 42nd year. It started out as a fire department memorial service. If you go across the street, Ivy Hill, you can drive through, you can see all the memorial stones, which now is a joint memorial of our police department, our fire department, our rescue squad, and the American Legion Post 60. Chaplain Litchfield has been very instrumental in keeping that going, along with other members of each of the organizations at Planet. This year, they did, Fire Department did have a special tribute that they did. They, we worked with them on two plaques that will be, bronze plaques that will be at the firehouse. One of those is Francis Gray, who was a member of the Laurel Fire Department, a city resident, and was the only member the Laurel Fire Department had that was killed in the line of duty in Vietnam. So they recognized that. That was back in 1968. So that tells you how they continually remind people and remember those individuals that served. The other one was in memory of pipeman Charles L. Frankie, who was Baltimore City. Back in 1898, he was killed here in the line of duty. He was a member of a Baltimore City career side for, I think, 44 days in the big fire in Laurel, and he was killed in the line of duty here. So they recognized him as well, and I think that says a lot about the organizations. The Laurel Library did have its groundbreaking today. For those that may not know, or if you haven't been down in that area, the area is being prepared for the new Laurel Library. It'll be double in size. I think, all said and done, people are going to be very surprised when the project is done. It is a county project, but we have been working with them the past several years, as well as members of the community. The Emancipation Park will be put back. There'll be a small amphitheater that will be added there. The equipment that has, actually that was burned, we waited to put that back. That's going to go back on the site, as well as the basketball court. And, but I think people will be very pleased. And as I said today, because I did get a few calls, there will be over 100 trees replanted there. So when it's all said and done, you know, we were sorry to see some of the trees that have been there for so long, but I did learn today that several of them, they had inspected, and they were being eaten from inside out. So I'm not sure how long some of those may have been there. So it's kind of a shocker for those that haven't been there, but I want to assure them, and we've discussed it, that I think it'll be heavily replanted, and as I said, with the trees and the things that are occurring there, I think everybody will be very pleased with it. Want to congratulate Mary Lehman, Councilmember Mary Lehman. She has been very instrumental in moving this forward 100%, and she's going to continue to make sure that it moves forward. Their contract requires them to be done in 15 months, so I think it's fair to say that you'll see them, this project completed in 15 months. So, you know, I think all the other 18, 15, and all those other things that you've heard out here, I'm pretty confident we'll see that happen, unless we get a big snowstorm again. So you never know in Laurel. Just a couple of announcements. The City of Laurel, and actually, Pat Haag is here tonight with us. The city did receive a grant through Legit for the police department. We, Pat worked on that. There was a $2,500 grant that we'll be using for the police department for body cameras, as most know. City of Laurel's been using those body cameras for almost a little over two years now, and I think they're well-served, and we're going to continue. We've got roughly about three-quarters of our patrol with cameras. And as Mr. Les reminds me, in-car cameras, we've had for over 20 years, 20 years. So I want to thank Pat and thank Legit for the $2,500. Every bit helps. The Laurel Farmers Market will open on June 4th, and each Thursday thereafter, it'll be opened until October 29th. The Laurel leg of the Law Enforcement Torch Run for Special Olympics, which our police department's heavily involved in, will take place on June 3rd. There are several different locations. I think the best thing is to send you to our website and look at the press release on that. And then I want to remind people, and it's on our website as well, FEMA has updated their maps for flooding. As most know, if you've been around, there are certain areas that flood. Those areas, Main Street, Tucks and Greens, all of those areas, and different parts of the Main Street area, I guess is the best way to say it, could be affected. There's roughly about 50 properties that are going to be affected with these. These are maps that are done at, through the federal and the county and state level. They're adopted. There is a press release on our website. We actually had an open house here. Unfortunately, we didn't have anybody show up when they came in. The next one's up on, at Prince George's County. But you can go to the website at www.marylandfloodmaps, all spelled out, M.D. floodmaps.com, and you can check to see. Sometimes it's hard to see those. Jack, they can also come to your office as well. You can also go to Jack Brock, who's planning and zoning. They'll be able to show you those as well. It is crucial, especially for those 50 or so that may be incorporated into the flood plan because of flood insurance and other things you may be required to get. So take the time to look at that. And that concludes my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
With that, we'll go on, excuse me, we'll go on to item number 11. This is the second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number 1849. An ordinance adopting the operating budget of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year of July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016, and to levy property taxes and to authorize the collection of such taxes, and approving the capital improvements program for the fiscal year 2016 through 2021. I read it into the record for the second time. I'll open the public hearing at 7:39. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the? I'm sorry, Michelle. I'm calling you. Go ahead.
That's fine. I just wanted to bring to your attention, as you know, having received it already, on page five of the ordinance, in the last section of verbiage, I'm working with Mr. Manzi, we just tightened up the language in order to make sure we're getting specific approval of the reauthorization of existing funds for the ongoing and previously approved projects that were already in the CIP. We want to keep those funds in place moving forward. And it doesn't require an additional hearing, but I just wanted to bring it up.
Thank you. So I've opened the public hearing at 7:39. And is anyone wishing to speak on the budget? Mr. Mayor?
I guess, Michelle or Bob, is that required when they make the motion as amended then or not? So they should make a motion?
Because we did amend it.
As amended? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So is anyone else wishing to speak on the budget? If not, I'll close the public hearing at 7:40. What's the pleasure of the council? I'll take the motion first.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I move for the adoption of ordinance number 1849, an ordinance adopting the operating budget.
Mr. Les, I take the motion first. Motion to amend.
No, no, it's a part of the motion.
You can do it as a motion.
It's part of the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I move for the adoption of ordinance number 1849, an ordinance adopting the operating budget and capital improvement program of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016, and to levy property taxes and to authorize the collection of such taxes as amended.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
President Ricks?
I vote yes, and I'd like to say that I think that this budget allows us to continue to grow without raising the tax rates, and I look forward to working with the administration to carry it out in the next session. Thank you very much.
Mayor Moe?
Mayor?
Thank you. I'm going to concur. I want to thank the council. Let me thank Michelle and her staff for all the hard work that they did, Public Works and others for the CIP. This is the eighth year that we've been able to maintain the property tax at the same rate. Before that, we dropped it. It's still a very tight budget this year. There are other things that we would like to do, but there's just not a whole lot of money, and we understand it's very tight for everyone out there. So again, I think the administration's trying to pull back wherever they can and save a dollar where possible. And again, I want to thank the council for working with the administration, and I concur. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make the following statement. It's made regarding the adjournment of the mayor, excuse me, of the city council to adjourn in the closed session on this day to discuss a legal matter with council. The reason for adjourning to a closed session is to consult with the council and obtain legal advice regarding a real estate matter. The legal authority for this closed session is contained in the state government Article of Maryland Code, Section 10-508A, small a, 7 in per en. And I've signed the statement as president of the council. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I have to vote to go in.
Sorry?
Chair, you have to.
Mr. President, you have to vote to go into closed session by roll call.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules. Correct?
Nope.
To adjourn to executive session.
Well, you don't have to suspend the rules.
Executive session.
Yeah. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Ricks?
Yes.
Hey, Eddie, tell who you want back there.